All right. We open the regular board meeting, the town of Messina. I'll start with flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So it comes from Miller's suggestion we would have a 15-minute period at the beginning if anybody had any questions about what's on the agenda. Anybody? All right. First, I'd like to thank our legislator from St. Lawrence County for coming to the meeting.
For having me back today.
Second, could we kind of jump ahead and do the Don Byssner Fish Report? Did you want to talk, Tom?
Sure. Just to bring the board up to speed.
Just a general update.
Yeah. Just to bring the board up to speed, obviously, we still have our four fishing tournaments scheduled for this year. Don and Linda and I have put together a really active committee to make sure that we try to cover all our bases and do the best we can for the town of Messina. So those four tournaments are moving forward. This morning, I went out to the Clarkson Bass Masters opening. They had their kickoff this morning. They had a ton of boats, 200 some boats. All went well. I got to talk to a few of them. A few of them are here. I've already taken Tuesday. It was good networking with them and they really enjoy this river and said a lot of good things about it. So that's going good, too. So in front of you, Don put together a package of where we feel we should go in the future. Obviously, this is just things that we are projecting could possibly come and forecast for 2020. That's for your review. Look it all over. There's a lot on here, but this is what we've been saying for the last year, year and a half, is that the more we continue to network, the more people find out about Messina, the more they want to come here, which is good for us. So in this beautiful package that Don and Linda put together, I ask that you look this over and we can discuss it in the future about how we want to go forward in 2020 and 2021. Now, obviously, again, part of you've got to keep in your mind is that the intake project has not started yet, so we've got to make sure we keep that in mind, too. So again, don't release this yet because there's going to be some contracts negotiation with some of these if we choose to go forward with it. So look it over. I want to thank Don and Linda. They've been extremely busy this week and they rushed back to get here for this meeting and put this together and I can't thank you enough for doing that and I appreciate that because it's really crucial that this board knows the forecast for 2020 and the way we have to continue to push forward. So thank you for rushing back. Thank you very much.
Don, did you have any?
Oh, go ahead. So look it over and then we can discuss it. And maybe next week, we can just start discussion through emails and then we'll discuss it in the meeting or something. Okay?
I'd just like to make a comment on this. And in the first paragraph, at the very bottom, it says, "These events promise to continue." The brand negotiation that Messina is truly the world's fishing capital. It would seem that an article in an insert in the paper earlier this week or last week would seem to belie that. It listed four best accesses to the St. Lawrence River. Is that right, Don?
Uh, is it?
And Messina is not on there.
Yeah, no.
For the second year in a row.
Everything I was saying is right. What we have to find out now because this is significant because every person that we have brought up from other areas to look at what we have, the access that we have here, is blown away. They have said that it's not only good, it's better than any place that they've seen. And I will put that our intake, as it exists right now, and once it's finished, as it exists, there won't be anything along the St. Lawrence River that compares. We have been down to Clayton. We have gone to these other places, even Wattington, and it can't compare with what we have to offer here. So the bottom line is whoever's putting this in, we have to get to them and we have to make sure that, and that's one of the things that I'll take upon myself to make sure that we find out.
Yeah, there's no byline. There's no name attached to the, it's just part of an insert that's in the paper.
It's been the identical article for three years in a row.
They haven't changed.
It's just copy and paste three years in a row.
Yes.
I have it at home, so it's just identical.
Is it paid advertising as an insert? Do you think?
No, it's part of a.
Summer vacation, St. Lawrence County, summer vacation.
Summer vacation, tourism.
No, but some of those tourism things are paid. Like, it's not somebody writing about it. It's paid for advertising that somebody puts in.
This is not an advertisement. This is.
An article.
An article on access to the St. Lawrence River and the best spots to do that. And Messina's not one listed as one of them.
Are the other three spots in St. Lawrence County?
Yes.
Or they aren't?
It's all St. Lawrence County access, yeah.
So I would think, my first direction would be to the St. Lawrence County Chamber and find out what, how this is getting in there and if the Chamber is representing this area, why have they not mentioned the best access point on the river? If it is a Chamber thing. So we'll find out about that.
Thank you.
All righty. I acknowledge the legislator here, but I didn't, is there some progress you can report from the county or something?
Well, as you know, we are giving money to Messina Fishing Tournament, Wattington Fishing Tournament, making plans for that. And of course, we have upcoming sales tax negotiations that will start in a couple months. That's kind of it at this point. But I'll have a monthly report each month if you like.
Thank you.
And the last thing, Mr. Supervisor, is after last month.
Sorry. I don't mean to keep cutting you off.
That's fine. After last month, when we did a contract with Jason, Jason has been working countless hours to improve our social media, our websites. We've gotten people that have gone on here and asked for locations, spots to fish from out of state. Am I right, Jason?
Yeah, I'm coming to the Rockville State Park. Looking to drop their boats in those things.
So it's working really well. He continues to have a plan of putting out things. So it's really working well, in my opinion. He put out, we always put out the big Bass Bowl entry on the opening day of Bass and we've got six people registered already, so it's working well. And he gave you, also in front of you tonight is a report from Jason, what he has done for the last three weeks.
Yep.
And I thank you for that, too, Jason.
Go along with that, Jason. Put out an email for a group to get together and meet and work on all the aspects of what they're doing. So I don't even think the assignments were, I think Tom and I kind of agreed to step up and work for the rest of you to work on our group.
Yeah. All right. So move. All righty. Seven minutes, everybody? You have some minutes that we're going to ask that you approve tonight?
So move, I'm used.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. I'm looking for authorization to sign a grant application to reconstruct the terminal access road, the design aspect at the airport. And the AIP number is 3-36-0054. And in 2019, total project cost is $72,000. And the town share is $1,800.
Second.
Who looks seconded by Melanie and Albert? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. Looking for your authorization to sign the other grant application to purchase the ARF, which stand, what's that?
Airport Rescue.
Here.
Firefight.
There we are.
It's a fire, it's basically a fire truck.
Fire truck.
Yeah.
Vehicle for the airport. We've talked about this before. The total cost, project cost is $350,000 and our share would be $8750.
So move.
Second.
And we did, we had to rebid that twice. There was issues with the original bid. One company didn't get all the information, so we rebid it. We got one bid back. Obviously, it's the $350,000. It is on the airport CIP. Once you guys approve it and the FAA approves it, you're looking at a 360-day lead time to get this truck. So you're probably not going to see it until 2020 or probably somewhere.
So when do we pay for it?
When we get it.
So it won't even be in this.
No, no, we're going to, those are things we have to keep track of when we go from budget to budget. So carryovers.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. All right. Looking for authorization to sign the grant application for the GA apron rehabilitation design at the airport.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. Looking for authorization to sign the grant application for the terminal apron rehabilitation. How is this different?
GA apron and another one is terminal. Yeah, there's two different ones.
Yeah, two, I'm sorry, they're two different. What's a terminal apron?
Terminal, GA.
It's, you know, for the terminal itself, for the main terminal.
All right.
The GA, that is a, the FAA came to us with money and asked us if we had a project that we wanted to put in and that's an additional, so the GA apron. The terminal apron has been on the airport CIP. It's on there. That was one. Pat called us about two weeks ago.
So.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, so carry. All righty. We need to re-advertise for a full-time labor position at the airport. The gentleman that we had offered the job to before turned it down since we offered it. So we'll have to re-advertise for it.
You're going to keep the present worker at the airport?
Yes, yeah. The highway department will be short for five, six weeks. Yep, I can't take him away from the airport, not with the three people there. So he's already, the person already knows he's staying. He has to stay there.
Steve, you want this in a motion or is that okay?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we re-advertise for a full-time laborist position at the airport due to the gentleman that was selected chose to stay at his previous employment and it's no fault of Frank. He did this three days before he was supposed to start. So I want to make it clear that Frank was scrambling and he finally called him up and said, "You've got to make a decision." The guy said, "I'm not taking it." So he's going to stay with his previous employment.
Second. Any further discussion? All those, abstentions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so carry. All right, we got the bids received for the airport fuel truck. There were three, Frank?
Yes. There was the, the low bid was 224,900. The next bid was 229,827. And the third bid was 239,500. So my recommendation, obviously, is to take the low bid, Skymark. But just so everybody understands, the original grant was 80, $180,000. The town had already agreed to put $20,000 in. So there's a difference of $24,900 that the town will have to.
Probably have that in fuel sales this year.
Yes. And one other thing, just to add on to this, there's a new requirement by the FAA that has to be in place by 2020. There has to be a, on the field truck, we're talking about the Jet A truck, there has to be a, there's a field monitoring system that has to communicate with a tank and a tank also has to have this equipment installed to prevent overspills or overfilling the truck. And that's a requirement that has to be in place. So if we didn't get the truck, you're going to spend $25,000 to put it on the old truck. So I guess you can look at it that way. And what we've done with the field tank is we have Taxiway C project that's going to take place next year. We had it, we were able to add that additional cost of installing equipment on the field tank into that project. So the town will have to, you know, obviously pay the full price of that either, so.
Are you still happy with the sales of?
Oh, yes, yes. We, last month, we generated $80,000 in revenue at the airport. Revenue. It's averaged $70,000, $80,000 a month.
Good.
Field sales is a big part of that.
For field sales?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have the Skymark, equipment from Skymark, have you had that before or have you, anything, you know, just asking?
We haven't, no. Ours is a Gillian system, an international. Obviously, we've got international trucks, but there's very few of these companies.
Yeah, they're just by the chassis anyway than.
Yeah, they buy the chassis and they install the equipment. Yeah. This is, this is like 180-day lead time on this item, too.
I make a motion that we accept the bid for the airport field truck from Skymark for the total of 224,900.
Second. Is that, what's the lead time before that comes?
186 days. So you're talking towards the end of the year.
Tom, Tom, Tom. The motion you're doing, the town is going to pay the balance of that?
Sure. What's the balance?
24.
What other choice do we have?
I know, I just need to put that in motion.
Yeah.
24,900.
I have to go in, all revenues.
180, 20,000 was already agreed upon or, you know, through the budget process.
Sorry, my ear's plugged.
That's fine.
Do we have the 2017 numbers yet for the airport?
Like what?
What's that?
Like what?
Total cost.
Revenue versus, you know, revenue versus.
Yeah, I think it was 168. Just wondering what, had we added additional fuel sales, then too, we'd have to be a little lower. Just wondering.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry.
Um, one more thing, Steve, that I didn't get on here is I asked for your authorization to put a truck out for surplus equipment.
Oh, yeah.
And we did receive two bids. One bid was $1,247.50 and the other was 500. The minimum bid was 1,000. My recommendation is we accept the 1247.50 and we sell the truck to the individual that had that bid.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry.
Can I give you one?
Yeah, I'll give you everything. Right here.
We should actually have a name before we go actually, in case it happens to be a relative or something.
Don, next step.
Oh, Don.
All righty. The property tax on the hangar bid. Because we didn't notify it at the right time, so it's $4,331.46. And it's been paid. So we thought we had done the proper motion last month. What's the last one?
Got our special meeting.
Yeah, the last special meeting. So let's make that in form of a formal motion, please.
I'll make that motion. Pay the tax bill of $4,000, $31.46 for the taxes on the hangar building. I have a few comments to make about that. I reached out to the county attorney, the treasurer, municipal, real property, and they said we could, we could ever put in an application for refund. Then we have to go to the board for approval as well, so I'll work too busy with grievance day, but we'll get on that to get the application for refund before the county portion of the, obviously, the town parlor commands us anyway, so.
Good, good work. All righty, so let's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. All right, public hearing. We need to set a notice and advertise it for a application. We're going to be applying for at least one right now for a micro enterprise grant that would come from the Community Development Block grant that our community developer and the grant writer, what's the strategic, Lee and Wes, we're going to be applying for these and it's to help small businesses in the town of Messina with five or less employees. And they can be eligible under whatever criteria we establish. Some communities have narrowed it down to businesses that normally wouldn't get a banking loan, like restaurants or small businesses. So they can, we can set whatever criteria you want for giving them money, such as if they hire another employee or if they improve their facility. I mean, there's any, and that's something that we would decide in the public hearing, interactive public hearing. So this application has to be in by July 25th, so we need to set a public hearing. It would have to be a special meeting before that.
We got this meeting on July 17th. We have it 5:00.
Yep.
Like, everyone remember our time at this event?
Does it have to be that far ahead? 5:00, because then if they go, if nobody comes, if we just sit here till 5:30, why can't we just, why can't we have a meeting at 5:30?
Okay.
Public hearing, then go right into our ready meeting. I make a motion that we.
Well, didn't we end up time when we have to approve it, so everything else?
Oh, I know.
That's the only thing.
I am talking.
And there are some questions, whatever, might go ahead and when I would end up time.
Yeah, I would think that we could have a special meeting. To just have that public hearing and make any determination what we want to stipulate in the block grant.
Thursday is the 25th. Bob is, excuse me, July, so it's got to be in by then, so I would wait till that close. I would do it before that, make sure she has time.
Well, I think it's probably bad week. So we'll go next week.
Are we going to get, it's got to be posted in the press. How long of a lead time would you need, this town clerk?
Probably 10 days for a public hearing. I would have it 338, 12.
What's anybody's preference?
Any days, we're good for you. Any days, I agree.
Wednesday. I'd say it works. I'd say the 10th.
10.
Yep, 10.
We'll have a special meeting for the public hearing and to make any stipulations for the.
July 10, you said?
Yes.
Yes. Five or 5:30?
I would love five. The earlier, the better for me.
Your loss.
I am not.
July 10, 5:00.
5:00?
5:00.
Who's making a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. All right, we have an addition here, but I don't know if you, whatever your pleasure is, but we just got this today. It's Burnham Benefit Advisors and there's a contract. I mean, we can wait till next month.
When is I expect?
We just sent it to me today.
Yeah, this is, we've had that for many years.
Yeah. And then part of the fee is still the same. Unless they want you to, you know, they email yourself, but I did that. Yep, I did for you.
Great. So you want a, a motion with your, with the contract for Burnham. For, you know, about benefit advisors. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry.
I want the transfer amendments be approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry.
I moved that warrant six be approved.
Second, and there's way too many bills this month.
And you keep shaking, you know, rubbing your right hand.
I know it.
Carpal tunnel or?
Yes, man.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. The financial reports were sent to you by email. If there's any questions. Anybody got committee reports?
Yeah, we've got, I'll pass this around, this is recreation department, summer events. At the rec meeting, I know there's been questions on this before, half of the bleachers, these are safety factors now, half of the bleachers are done and they should be finished. They will be finished by the time high school graduation is held. July 1st, the roof project is proceeding. July 1st is the start date for the LED project and one month from July 1st, it should be finished and all the lighting should be taken care of. That's it for the rec. The beach is open, Memorial Day weekend is open, summer rec program July 1st through August 9th. So they're getting ready to gear up for summer.
I just want to add something, you know, the rescue squad in the library, if I could. Excuse me. The rescue squad went over a new credit card policy and how they're going to handle it with, in their own department and it's approved by the board there on what they're going to do and how they're going to handle it for eating out, stuff like that, for upcoming classes and stuff like that.
board there, um, and what they're gonna do and how they're gonna handle it for eating out, stuff like that, for upcoming classes and stuff like that. Um, they are always looking for new members, they do have quite a few that have come into it, but they're always still looking for new members. And the library this weekend, the twenty-second, they are having a words in the woods family fun event, and everybody is encouraged to go to it this Saturday at the, um, the Henry Center.
I'll just say one other thing on the library, we had our internal inspection of the boiler. Uh, first one since, so the last one was two thousand fifteen, it was noted that there was several pitting going on inside. Uh, we worked with Waterwise to set up water treatment. When it was inspected on May twenty-eighth of this year, the, basically, the pitting has been eliminated. And, uh, one recommendation out of it is that we should clean, go in and do a clean, uh, you know, clean the, the, uh, the boiler itself of a cleaning, so we're set.
Has that ever been done? Factory and Orla?
No, no. Uh, highway, uh, we made several repairs in North Racket this year, damage from the winter. Uh, we finished prepping the Hamlet Road for paving, uh, we're at the administration road, started there today, and, uh, once we get that done, we'll move on to the Haverstock. Uh, spring cleanup, uh, was, I, I think went very well this year. Uh, our tipping fee and tonnage is, they're pretty well averaged, they're, with the last, from sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. The only difference is that we're not throwing our trucks and our equipment in there, you know, additional cost of having our people there, so. Um, we handed out three hundred and forty-three vouchers, and one hundred and seventy-one of them got used, so. Obviously, we're mowing road sites, uh, you know, working on, cleaning up cemeteries, mowing, and the county's in painting our roads, so they've been here since the beginning of the week. Airport boutiques numbers continue to improve, May eight sixty-four. On the fuel sales, we sold, I just looked, we sold fourteen thousand three hundred gallons of Jet-Aid last month. We, uh, we, we, we had a pre-bid meeting for the fence project and for the parking lot project, uh, those bids are due by the end of this week. Hopefully, we'll get somebody to bid on that. Taxiway A, phase two project starts July twenty-second. And, um, we had our FAA certification inspection on the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth of May, went very well, we got two miners, uh, we got, we had to replace one sign that was faded on the avgas, uh, fuel tank, and we have several minor revisions to the ACM airport certification manual. Uh, that we fixed, so, uh, the comments, FAA, uh, really enjoy coming to the Messina Airport, thinks it looks really nice, well-kept. Uh, appreciate the, the reactions to their, their comments from the previous year, we act on them, and we try to, you know, implement those things before they become a, uh, a, uh, a, an incident where they have to write us up for it. So they think we're very proactive and just complimented us on the visit, and actually enjoyed being here, they said, so. That's all I got.
Oh, just on the airport, just to let everybody know, or know that, uh, two weeks ago, we held our tabletop exercise, which includes Messina Fire, Messina Rescue, Messina PD, no, State Police PD, and TSA, and somebody else.
Boutique.
Boutique, and we all sit down, and we review our emergency policies out there, and actually, it's good networking, and anybody can ask questions, so. Uh, I want to thank Frank for doing that, and Sean, uh, they hosted it, and they did a wonderful job, and, uh, every particular, it just keeps everybody up to speed on how we're gonna respond and everything like that, so, thanks, Frank.
How many, uh, apple fritters did you eat?
How'd you know about that?
That's a three.
That's, it's mandatory that I'm, I'm not going. Just saying. I didn't eat three either.
Is that where the, uh, is that where the issue came out with no power to the fuels?
That, that has always been...
Two years ago, we talked about it.
We talked about that two years ago. We had, we, we were able to, any other part of the airport, if we lose power or have an natural disaster, we can run the runways, the terminal building, the runway lighting, but the fuel tanks are tied into the old hangar, there's no generator there, the art building has a generator. So that's why when this gen, this G A apron came up, we could tie those, there's two things, one, we can run the power to the art building and include it in that, in that project, and also, the, the, the panel that has all the controls for the, uh, fuel tank, fuel farm, is heaved significantly this year. And they're, they're concerned with that, so their recommendation is we need to start looking at how we get that fixed, so we can incorporate that into this project. And take care of all those things all at once.
Which is huge, when, if a natural disaster, our airport is one of the only ones around, it might, right? That's what we're being told.
Exactly.
That'll be generated enough to be able to land, where fuel...
Plus, there's kind of landings.
You think it can be used as a command center, because obviously, because of...
Yeah, that's huge.
Plus, you have the answer on landing, which, right, airports have. I didn't notice a mowing going on.
Yep.
On the county board, it's the county board.
MED, uh, not too much report on MED, very small outages. Uh, Andy and the board approved Jeff Loomis to go over and do an energy efficient study at the, uh, firehouse. And that study will be given to us, and we're going to submit it to, like, your Sam, NIPA, so there, to apply for a grant, possibly, to do some energy efficient upgrades over there, there's still flash lights, the doors, the boiler, the boiler is, I think, somebody said eighties. So, I mean, there's some issues over there, so he did, MED allowed Jeff Loomis, who does all their energy efficient studies, to go over there, and he looked at insulation factors, windows, doors, boilers, hot line heaters, lighting, basically, so. That report, when I get it, I will submit it on to NIPA and apply for a grant to take care of that, too.
That was in the pack, and their, their meeting is Monday, or this is Monday.
Alrighty, uh, the, meeting, see, I talked to you...
I didn't make the last meeting, we're meeting tomorrow, actually.
I've been talking daily with Jim Murphy, about starting a strategic plan. We have, uh, because, you know, our comprehensive plan is nineteen eighties, I think. I mean, it's really old, because Al approved it. And so, uh, so anyway, we're looking to develop a plan to move, to organize what needs to be done in the town as far as infrastructure, and also some things like this block grant that we're applying, that hopefully, that we can get to apply for. There's all sorts of programs out there and ways to improve, including the tourism down to the infrastructure, so. I'll be looking for the town board members to volunteer, the, um, that committee, to kind of get things proven, you know, hopefully, to get...
Wonderful to talk to, Jim, wonderful.
Yes, he has been very involved. I think it's a great thing that both the town and the building can pay for that, so that we get the services. What do we, press first, any questions?
Couple of quick questions. Okay, yeah. Frank, um, I just wanted to double check, you said you gave out three hundred and forty-three vouchers?
Three seventy-three.
Three seventy-three. And a hundred and forty-one...
A hundred and seventy-one.
One seventy-one, or you mean, okay. Um, what was the cost?
Forty-five thou, uh, excuse me, forty-five hundred dollars.
Four thousand five.
Woo!
How many pounds?
I read all of that. The last two days were the big days.
Right here, I got it, right here. Uh, tons total was thirty-six forty-seven.
Three thousand six hundred...
No, thirty-six hundred, yeah, thirty-six forty-seven.
Three thousand si, four hundred, I'm sorry.
Thirty-six ton, thirty-six point four seven ton.
Thirty-six point four seven tons, okay. And Steve, I'm asking because, uh, the consolidator, I'm sorry, the community development block grant resolution, the bill passed somewhere one last night, they also have a couple consolidated funding applications that are part of that, are there any consolidated funding applications in town that you may hold a hearing on, like, in the near future?
We hope to.
Can you say anything more about, like, what the projects are, even if you don't want us to talk specifics, can you talk in a general sense about what maybe some of the projects are?
Well, we're looking at some of the, uh, infrastructure. You know, we have some sewer line that we, not a really glorious type of program, and that sort of thing.
And those will be hearings later, like, yeah, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Righty. Anybody from the public? Yes, sir.
I should have went to...
Say we don't have the podium up front?
No problem.
Okay. I don't think we...
My name is Charles Romai, I live at twenty-three Monroe Parkway, in Messina. Freedom of speech is a person's right to speak his or her opinions, beliefs, and ideas, without having to fear that government will retaliate against him, restrict him, or censor him in any way. Civil rights are basic rights that every citizen has under the laws of government in the United States. The civil rights of each individual citizen are protected by the Constitution. Civil rights for every person means that regardless of gender, stature, religion, sexual orientation, nationality, age, or disability, a person should not be discriminated against. Civil rights include the right to free speech, privacy, religion, assembly, a fair trial, and freedom of thought. On April seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, at the town of Messina board meeting, two gentlemen had their civil rights violated. Robert Elsner and David Romai were told to stop talking after they had uttered only a few words. This was done by Stephen D. O'Shaughnessy, the current town Messina supervisor. No one tried to intercede with this blatant violation of not only the First Amendment, but also the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, including three members of the town council, and a sworn officer of the Courts of New York State, the town attorney. While doing the research on First Amendment and civil rights, I found a comment by David L. Hudson, Jr. Mr. Hudson is a renowned scholar in First Amendment rights. He teaches at both University of Vanderbilt and the University of Nashville Law Schools. His comment was, "One misconception is that many people do not realize that the First Amendment protects a great deal of obnoxious, offensive, repugnant speech." Justice Brennan of the Supreme Court once referred to this as the bedrock principle of the First Amendment. Benjamin Franklin proclaimed, "Whoever would overthrow the liberty of a nation must begin by subduing the freedom of speech." Mr. O'Shaughnessy told the media, days after the violation against free speech, his actions at the meeting were at the behest of fellow board members who felt that they were being attacked. "I have a solution for the full board." In nineteen forty-nine, after becoming president, Harry Truman told his staff not to concern themselves over criticism of their appointments. He said, "I'll stand by you, but if you can't take the heat, get out of the kitchen." The best way to resolve this injustice is to pass a resolution where the board could apologize to Mr. Elsner and Mr. Romai, or perhaps taking the leadership role that he holds, Mr. O'Shaughnessy could apologize publicly for his mistakes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jay?
Jason Hendricks, the president of Messina Chamber of Commerce, uh, just up to you guys, and some stuff to chamber, three items. Uh, Lock Store is up and running for the season, that opened on Memorial Day, will be open through Labor Day. Get a chance, stop out, check it out, the, uh, the power authority did a, a nice job redoing the inside of that building, uh, so that looks very sharp. Uh, the second item is our concerts in the park, uh, begins tomorrow night, and down in Springs Park, we start at six P M. with Divided Roads. And the third item is we're having our tri-chamber of alternative this Friday, still looking for a couple teams, so if anybody wants to get out of the office on Friday, uh, that'll be a seat review.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Alright, quiet.
Hi, sorry, Reed Current, also from the, um, narcotic task force. We have a new product, I'm gonna let you pass it down, look at it, only have one. You mix it with a prescription, if you're gonna throw it away, it kind of dissolves the pills, makes it into, it's something gelatinous, and makes it inert, so that if an animal or somebody gets into it, it's not chemically viable anymore. And they're giving these out, it's also a product that's made in the USA, and we've been getting them from Fort Drum, if you have any interest in having some at the town hall, let me know, and I can get you a supply.
Great.
Through, um, Fort Drum Regional Group.
They still have a reclaim box in the police department?
I believe that they do, but this is actually better, because if you mix this stuff in, once it's even in a reclaim box, there's nothing anybody can do to make it a, something you can pass to someone else anymore.
So this could be mixed in with...
There's corrections on the back, you just take the regular, I brought a little bottle, take the regular sized prescription bottle, put, you know, so much water in it, put that in, and kind of shake it around, and it makes it into like a gel that hardens later, so it's, somebody can't fish the medicine. They had problems in New York City, where they collected all the prescriptions, and then they still found it to a secondary market, so.
It's important not to put them in the sewer system, they're starting to find traces of pharmaceuticals
Yes.
within, uh, sources of water.
Uh-huh. That's why they don't want them flushed anymore.
So if somebody, if somebody was to do this, they should bring them back into...
You can throw them right in the garbage when they're done, and they're just finished, there's nothing else you can do with it, you know, they'll all biodegrade over time, but... I can get you a full package from Fort Drum Regional, people, if you're interested. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Righty, motion, okay, anybody?
I'll break second, second.
I'm aware.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.